I've got some time to make it up.
Is Michael coming?
He is, he's in the middle, he'll be here shortly.
Listen, no worries.
Yeah, Brian, in the control room.
Okay.
You go ahead and start without me, I'm going to let a counselor in.
Counselor out?
Yeah.
Mike, you ready?
Um, two seconds.
Ann went to go get someone to come in.
She said we could.
Oh, she said go?
She said go. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please ask everyone for a brief moment of silence in recognition of those and veterans who have passed. This evening especially, our condolences go out to the family of Paul Stroeder Jr. upon his passing on March 3rd, 2020. Mr. Stroder served aboard the USS Joseph E. Tassig DE 1030 in the United States Navy during the Korean War. Our condolences also go out to the family of Frank W. Needham upon his passing on March 12th, 2020. Mr. Needham served the United States Marine Corps during the Korean War. Thank you, and I thank every, all my colleagues and everybody here tonight attending this special emergency meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to get a complete update from the town manager on the current COVID-19 virus response here in the town of Bridgewater. And anyone on the council that has any questions for the town manager, hopefully he'll be able to give us some answers, where we are, where we're going, and what has been done. I know a lot has been done, and I certainly appreciate the updates that you've given to us so far. I know it's been an awful lot of work for you and your staff, so if I could just direct to the town manager for an update.
So, thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that, and I think you're correct. I think the staff and certainly the emergency management team, which is the folks sitting behind me, have done an exceptional job making sure that we can provide very safe environment, both for our staff and for citizens. So, I do, I do give them my thanks and certainly appreciation. As you know, we ended up declaring a state of emergency as of last night at approximately 7:30. This came after the governor's announcement yesterday that he was limiting gatherings to 25 people or less, and would be closing down restaurants and bars, and limiting the service of restaurants to takeout or delivery. Obviously, at that point, we decided we had to take some action. And I can tell you that when we declare a state of emergency, for those that don't know, obviously, it indicates that we are dealing with something that is highly unusual. Usually, it means that we're dealing with a snowstorm, or the aftermath of a hurricane, or something that's identifiable and somewhat quantifiable within the context. In this case, it's a little different. We're dealing with something that's really outside of our ability to wrap our hands around right now. But we do this declaration so that we can ensure that we are going to preserve our ability to submit any applications to the Massachusetts Emergency Management or the Federal Emergency Management Agency for potential reimbursements for costs that are associated with this, this particular crisis. We don't, we don't issue, obviously, states of emergency on a regular basis, but when we think that we will incur because of a natural disaster, and I would classify this as a natural disaster, but in the event of a natural disaster, we have to spend money that's not otherwise budgeted, then we want to make sure that we're doing so under that state of emergency or that declaration of emergency, because that is the trigger that qualifies us for potential reimbursement. So, I hate to say that it's all about finances, but in this case, the trigger really was to make sure that we were putting ourselves in a good position to be reimbursed. That said, we have taken, I think everybody knows, we've taken some pretty drastic action, at least yesterday, during our emergency management team meeting. It seemed like pretty drastic action to shut the buildings down to the public. You will note, and for the public watching this meeting, there are no members of the public here, no offense to everybody here, but there are no members of the public here. That is because we have restricted access to the meetings, and that's in keeping with the restrictions that we've placed on public, public buildings. So, we are not currently allowing members of the public into any municipal building. That includes this academy building, our municipal office building, that includes the library, that includes the Council on Aging, that includes the offices of the Roadways Department, and the offices of Water and Sewer and Recreation. So, we've limited public access in those buildings. And the reason for people that find that that's quite a drastic step to take, the reason is that we want to do everything we can to limit, to essentially break the chain that a virus is. So, we want to make sure that we are doing our part as a community to keep our residents as safe as possible, to keep our staff as safe as possible. So, if we can be, play a part in breaking that chain, or creating weaker links in that chain, so that the virus doesn't spread, then it's incumbent on us to do that. So, I say that yesterday seemed, it seemed like quite a drastic step. I can tell you that as of this morning, just about every city and town in this area is, has either done the same thing, or has planned to do the same thing, starting either tomorrow or Wednesday. So, we are a little ahead of the curve, but that's perfectly fine by me. So, how do people get, conduct business in this scenario? So, right now, most people, quite honestly, are trying to figure out how to make sure they pay their excise tax, and afraid of penalties if they don't get their excise tax bill paid. So, there are multiple ways you can pay your excise tax without coming into the building. For those that are looking to write a physical check, and again, we're asking that people not give us cash at this point, but people that have a physical check, that want to deliver a physical check, they can do so at the drop box, which is on the Bedford Street side of the academy building, right at the bottom, essentially the bottom of the ramp up to the door. So, there's a drop box there. That drop box gets checked about three times or four times a day, and we will continue to do that for the foreseeable future. We have decided that we can waive penalty and interest on excise tax bills if they are paid by the end of the month. So, for those that are afraid that this shutdown, or this barring of the public from the public buildings is going to mean that they have to incur an excise tax penalty or an interest charge, that is not the case. We will waive penalty and interest as long as the bill is paid by the end of the month, end of March. Otherwise, we are working with the departments to make sure that we can accommodate most, if not all, of the requests that generally come from in-person folks coming into the building. We are going to make sure that people understand that they can call. Staff is still here, we are doing our work on a day-to-day basis, although today was a little unique. But moving forward, we'll be doing our work on a daily basis, just as we would at any other time. So, if people want to call us, they certainly can call. If people want to email particular folks, they can email. The email addresses and the phone numbers are all on the website for the various departments. I only ask that people have a little patience. We obviously are getting more than our share of phone number, phone calls right now, and more than our share of emails right now, so that in order to return those calls and emails, I just ask that people, it may take a little longer, and I ask that people be a little, a little more patient. I think it's not news to you, the Bridgewater Rainham Schools had originally decided to close for two weeks. The governor last night extended that out, so that there's, they will be closed for at least three weeks. One thing I do want to point out, for those that may be listening to this meeting after the fact, it's a, these situations, or this particular situation, is very fluid. As I mentioned, it's not like a winter storm or a hurricane where you can really get your arms around the aftermath. The approach, the federal and the state approach to this is changing, it's quite a, quite a fluid dynamic, so that, so that things change quite frequently. And a good example is, yesterday morning, the governor indicated that he wasn't planning on making any closures by the end of the day. He had substantially reversed course, and had closed down quite a lot more than other states had done so far. But I think we'll begin to see some, some states falling right into line with what Massachusetts has done. So, in the case of the senior center, I had mentioned that we've closed that to seniors. We won't have any senior programming for the foreseeable future. We don't want to encourage people, especially vulnerable populations, to congregate at this point. However, we're very conscious of the impact that that has on seniors who are maybe stuck at home, who don't necessarily have a large social network. So, Emily Williams, our elder services director, is trying to make sure that we cover checking on those folks, making sure that they've got some telephone contact with volunteers and with staff down at the, at the center. We are continuing our Meals on Wheels program. It will be conducted with probably some changes in protocol. Instead of volunteers actually going into the house and putting the meal in a refrigerator, we may be looking at changing those protocols, so that we don't push volunteers into, into people's houses, both for the protection of the volunteer and the protection of the, of the senior. Right now, we have also closed Old Scotland Links Golf Course to the public. We have also closed the town and school playgrounds to the public. In addition, we have canceled organized athletic events on town fields. And as I mentioned prior, we've closed the offices of water, sewer, and roadways, and recreation to public, to the public as well. At this point, we're leaving this transfer station open and operable. Given the warnings and the advice from CDC and the Department of Public Health, there was no reason to shut that down. So, very generally, and I, I don't pretend to be an expert on infectious disease, but very generally, being outside, being exposed to the fluctuations in temperature and the fluctuations in weather, is actually probably one of the best places to be, to avoid, avoid the virus. We've also closed both the police and fire administrative offices to the public, and the, certainly the business lines for those two places are fully operational, and if people need to contact the fire department, that's 508-697-0900. And the police department is 508-697-6118. So, any need to get in touch with those folks. We also recognize that the police department in particular sees a lot of traffic into its front vestibule. We ask people who are able to conduct their, any police business, to conduct it either via email or telephone. In particular, there's some licensing that goes on there, but we do ask people to call ahead and follow the directives of the police department, the new protocols, at least the temporary protocols that we've got out there. I would add that we are handling all 911 calls, obviously. We're not, we're not abandoning that. We have decided to change some of the protocols on 911, and also the responses from both police and fire, mostly in an effort to make sure that our firefighters and our police officers are well protected, but also to make sure that we're providing the best, the best service that we can possibly provide to our citizens. Let's see. The, we've met, I can tell you, today I met with all of the departments. I think everybody's on board. I think one of the beautiful things, poor choice of words. One of the great things about Bridgewater is that, is that you've got a very dedicated staff. I met with all the, all the folks from the highway department, all the folks from water, all the folks from sewer today, our inspectional services team. Everybody is prepared to do what they need to do, to make sure that the town continues to run. Everybody in this building is doing what they can do to normalize as much as possible what goes on here. And we recognize that the public will have some frustrations being not able to get into the building, and we'll address those as best we can, certainly through technology or any other means that we have available. In terms of internal meetings, we already have been using, and we will continue to use Microsoft Teams. All the counselors have that as well. Excuse me, we have, we've asked the IT department to send out very specific instructions on how to use that, and they have, they have done that. So, if you need those instructions, I'm happy to make sure that we can forward those to you. We are also looking at ways to conduct, well, let me back up. For this week, we have canceled all public meetings. We had a couple scheduled, none were pressing, none, we weren't waiting on decisions or votes from any of those boards and committees. So, we've canceled the meetings for this week. We are looking at a number of different software solutions, some we already have, some, some we may purchase, in order to provide essentially virtual meetings pursuant to the governor's orders to, to, to do away with, temporarily do away with certain provisions of the open meeting law. So, we will conform to the remaining portions of the open meeting law, for sure, but we are looking for the technology that will allow us to convene in a virtual setting and ensure that the public has access to that virtual setting, so that the public can see what's, what's going on in those meetings. So, that will be our, probably our biggest challenge moving forward, is how we, we live up to those expectations and those demands, but that is, that is in the works. So, if all goes well, by a week from today, we'll have something in place and something to share with you. Obviously, we'll have to go through a lot of practice sessions to make sure that people are aware about how to use that moving forward. We have not, to date, received any word from the Department of Public Health on any presumptive cases or confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Bridgewater. We know we have at least one case in Plymouth County, we know we have at least one play, one case in Bristol. I think everybody here knows that the symptoms can be nothing in a lot of people, can be flu-like in a lot of people, and then can be quite severe in other folks. Those folks generally being the ones most susceptible to these kinds of things, and those being in, with deficient, immune deficient, deficient immune systems, and certainly the elderly at risk. So, so I won't, I won't go over the precautions and what people should do in personal practice. I think everybody's heard that on a whole variety of different news sources. Am I missing, am I missing anything?
Just refer the public to the CDC website, Massachusetts Department of Public Health website as well, to get up to the minute, up to the minute information on outbreaks, and also recommendations on how to, how to spot the symptoms, and also ensure that you're doing everything you can to avoid it. So they can reach out to my office.
So, also, also, the Board of Health Office is also a resource, and if anybody has a particular question about Bridgewater, feel free to call 508-697-0903, and they can help you there. But I do want to stress, despite the fact that we are closed to the public, there are still people in the building, there are still people doing their jobs quite effectively. Universally, quite pleased that everybody is willing to try to get the job done, and make sure that the town continues to run as we would all expect it to. So, any, anything else? We do, just so you know, we do, because this has been, and will continue to be, a place, a public building, and a place where we bring staff on a daily basis, we have, what's the term? Thank you. We have disinfected this building and other municipal buildings, and we've done that on a regular basis, and we will continue to do so as we need. But that is a capability that we have, and the fire department's been extremely helpful in making sure that that gets done. So, I'd only leave you with this, and then open it up for questions. I think, very happy that people have stepped up, certainly staff has stepped up. We've had a number of people volunteer with elder services to make sure that we can get meals out to the elderly, and make sure that we can run the van, to make sure that we can take people to Market Basket or Roach Brothers, as the case may be. So, that's quite heartening. We are doing everything we can to make sure that we can get over this time period, and we're making sure that we are participating, being an active participant in trying to break the spread of this virus. And I trust that folks in town will understand that, and, and help us accomplish that, that goal. So, I am certainly happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions for the town manager?
Yes, more than a comment. Thank you, town manager, Mr. Dutton, for all those updates and the hard work that's being done by the town. Something as you look into ensuring that we can broadcast and be open to the public going forward for our open meetings. The town of Concord had some good tools. I know they're probably also super busy, but just looking at their resources, they were able to use their town broadcasting tied to Facebook Live, and was able to verify people's questions and their addresses, and go from there. And I want to make sure, since we do, do have an active Facebook population, that they are able to participate in our citizens' comments and questions as we go forward.
That's an excellent point.
Counselor Fitzgibbons?
Just a base question, first of all, I guess. Could you explain, Mr. Dutton, how we can now have a meeting of the council without it being open to the public under the open meeting law? Could you explain what's legal and what's not going forward? Because we don't want to be, you know, we don't want any perception that we're trying to do things undercover, so to speak. We want to obey by the current open meeting law, as interpreted.
Absolutely. And I don't think, you know, I think everybody in this room, and certainly I have a predisposition to making sure that everything is as open and transparent as possible. So, I don't want people to think that this is a mechanism by which, you know, anything nefarious is going to happen. We are following the governor's order. One of the first orders the governor issued pursuant to this COVID-19 virus was an order that, that essentially eliminated some of the open meeting law requirements. Creating a quorum present was one of those items that he waived, but in, he did emphasize that in order to preserve the public interest in, in public meetings, that the public had to have access somehow to, to the, either a transcript of the meeting immediately after, or have the ability to watch the meeting, you know, somehow electronically. So, so the governor removed the quorum requirement, meaning that the, if you had, for example, a nine-member council, in order to have a quorum, you need five members. In order for you to participate remotely, you still needed to have five members present, and then the other three members, no, the other four members could somehow participate remotely. So, what he did was he removed the restriction on the, in, the quorum present, and said that you don't require any quorum to be present. So, in the future, it is not, certainly not my hope, but it would not be out of the realm of thinking that, that we would not be sitting here, that we would all be logging into some sort of publicly accessible website, and each of you would be in your own homes or in your own offices, participating in a public meeting. That's not beyond the realm of possibility. That's certainly not where we want to go, but that's certainly not without, outside the realm of possibility. We've set up the room today. As you've noticed, you've got a lot more space between you. That is pursuant to the recommendation that there be six feet of, of space. Social distancing, which is a term that we didn't ever use three weeks ago, we're now using that term every five minutes. But you can see behind me, we've set up chairs, so, so that there's plenty of distance between people. people. That will continue whether we have meetings in this room with people present or outside of this room. Anybody in this room will be subject to this for at least the next month or so. So, that long answer to your short question.
Counselor Lindy?
I just wanted to thank you and your team for all the hard work. I did have two questions sent to me. How will people be able to do public comment during the meeting? Because we have two opportunities at the beginning and the end. And the other one is are you going to use Facebook Live to update people?
Both excellent questions. So, that's precisely what we're looking at now, is how can we ensure that we have some mechanism to have public comment using Mike -- well, I won't get into the details of the technology, but that's precisely what we're trying to look at now, is how can we create a system that allows public comment? And this is particularly important when we've got land use things in front of the planning board or the zoning board of appeals. Butters have a right to be heard on those items, and we want to make sure that we have a mechanism to allow that. So, that's a, you know, no matter what we do, we're going to have to build that in one way or the other. We will continue to update people. I'll continue to update people on multiple platforms. We're including Facebook, our website, Twitter. I'm sure I'm missing one or two or several, but we're trying to ensure that we have multiple formats in which to inform people. And we're trying, we have a company that's actually working with us to make sure that we're sending out a consistent message across all those platforms and making sure that we're sending out an accurate message, because now is not a time where you want to make an error in what you're telling people. So, we've been working very hard with them.
Thank you. Any else? Mr. George?
Thank you through you to Town Manager. A couple things. So, for committee meetings and things of that nature, are we looking at potentially requiring those to be in this room because of the technology available? Or how are we going to address that going forward?
I don't think that we necessarily have to limit meetings to this room. To the extent that meetings were happening in the hearing room across the hall or in the library or down at the Senior Center, I think the important part for us will be to make sure that we've got the technology that allows us to do, as I'll call it, a virtual meeting, but allow participants to remote in and allow plans or pictures or materials to be shown on a screen. I mean, that's the other piece that's kind of important in this process, is if we're going to have, and almost every committee has to see something, whether it's a subdivision plan or whether it's, you know, pictures of, you know, schematics or school, you know, the new school building or what have you. We need to have a platform that allows us to show those materials, also allows public participation, and then allows participation from the folks that are actually physically sitting in the room. So, but I don't think we need to or we will get to a point where this is the only space that we can do it. I think we can use the other room, and I think at this point, we can use the library and the Senior Center. So, in terms of a disruption of where meetings are, I'm not anticipating that will happen. It could, but I'm not anticipating it.
And the other thing is, we have both chiefs here, and I think I will take the liberty of speaking for the Town Council, is that if there's anything that you guys need for your folks, please don't hesitate. I think in these particular times, the littlest thing that we can do to not only, you know, help your guys help the public, but help them too, because we all know that you guys are out there exposing yourself to things potentially that, you know, we're in the public able to kind of shield ourselves from. So, that doesn't go unnoticed, it doesn't go unappreciated, but we're here for all of you. Thank you.
Counselor Rushton?
Well, I certainly hope I don't sound redundant here, but, you know, as a Town CEO, Mr. Dutton, you've done an outstanding job as a Town Council, the level of communication that we initially touched base last Thursday, and it's been ongoingly. And certainly through you to all of the department heads and other employees that have continued to meet in off-hours to plan and sort of prep where we needed to go and sort of helping to contain the issue in town. You've answered most of the questions that I had. I'm very happy to hear that in terms of social distancing and seniors that the Meals on Wheels program will continue. I'm happy to hear that, and Mrs. Williams is going to work on that. And to Counselor George, I just wanted to add, in terms of public safety, just to make sure that, you know, the only office that we really can't close is going to be public safety if things continue, to make sure that the necessary financial situation is accounted for so that there's no worry from a public safety end, we don't need to meet, that that, you know, is sort of being looked at and taken care of so they have the necessary resources and equipment that they need. And that was it.
I would only point out to follow up, I appreciate the comments certainly, but, you know, I think we have a long way to go, and I think the staff knows that, they're in it for the long haul. We met with, as I mentioned, everybody today. Finance, the finance group is ready to make sure that, you know, the bills get paid, invoices, you know, get processed, that they're accounting for the revenues coming in every day, so there's not a lag in that respect at all. And certainly, we, you know, for the folks that are out there, whether it's the public safety departments or it's the water or sewer or any, you know, inspectors, we're going to make sure that those people get paid on time and accurately. So, we've created quite an extensive, well, some extensive redundancies. We have also created the ability to work off-site in the very ugly possibility, and I think remote possibility, that we have to actually, you know, not come into this building. We can still make sure that the town's business gets done.
Thank you.
Counselor Fitzgibbons?
Thank you. Just a couple other questions that have come up to me over the last few days, and acknowledging we've never done this before. So, we may not have answers, and that's perfectly fine. We're clearing the drop boxes every day, and we're making deposits, and we're cashing people's checks on time as they get put in. Okay, because there was some concern about that from a couple of people that reached out to me. From an employee perspective, I'd just encourage you to make sure that, you know, I know some of our employees may have, be in a situation that are, they're in a group that is at higher risk and that they're perhaps more able to work at home than necessarily come into this building. Although the public's not coming in, et cetera, I understand that, there's still an elevated risk for them if they can do their job from home. If you could look at working with them on a case-by-case basis, I think that would be great. And those were the two things that I'd kind of heard out there from folks. Thank you.
I appreciate both those. I can tell you, on the employee side, what we're doing is we are making a temporary change to attendance policy, and we will make sure that people that, there are a number of different circumstances. We have a number of employees that are elderly, we have a number of employees that are at higher risk. We also have a number of employees who now have kids at home for at least three weeks that have no childcare. We are trying to create a temporary policy that accommodates all of those across the board. I can tell you, one of the things that I'm very proud of is that everybody showed up to work today regardless of being in any of those categories, but we did relay that to all the employees today that we're going to work with them.
Look at it from a common sense point of view. I guess what I'm saying.
Exactly, exactly.
I know you mentioned it, I think you mentioned it earlier, but it might have escaped me. The Town Hall being closed to the public, at the moment, is there an end date to that?
We originally had contemplated two weeks when we started this last night, and again, it's more than likely that we will get a directive from the governor's office sometime within, I would guess, the next couple of days, if we haven't gotten one already, to give us better guidance. But absent anything else, we are contemplating two weeks at this point.
And as we discussed briefly, next week's meeting that we have scheduled for March 24th, we will not do the State of the Town address at 6:30. That will get moved to April 7th at 6:30 at the moment. That's our meeting after next week. And if that changes, we'll just have to do it an alternative way. But so, the State of the Town will not take place on the 24th at 6:30, because we cannot allow the public in to that. As far as our meeting at 7:30 on Tuesday, at the moment, you're comfortable with keeping that on the agenda, keeping that to go forward?
At the moment, we are comfortable with that, and by that time, if any of the counselors, you know, ask for or require remote participation, we should be able to accommodate that in a better way than simply a telephone.
And what signals would you get to say that meeting probably should not go forward? I mean, what could change?
That's a great question, probably one that I can't answer, because if you asked me yesterday what I thought tomorrow would bring, I'd be all wrong.
So, at the moment, our meeting for a week from tomorrow night at 7:30 is on?
Yes.
And if there's any, we can't have any public hearings or anything like that, right? No, a petitioner can't come and?
That would be correct. That would be correct. That doesn't necessarily mean that the petitioner can't present something.
In writing?
Either in writing or remotely that you can all see, but we'll cross that bridge probably Thursday or this week.
And the other thing is too, I know this was, is not an initiative of the town, but it's been an initiative of the governor, and that is crowds of 25 or less and businesses, particularly restaurants in this town and throughout the state can't, cannot serve people other than through takeout. I just hope that we in the town can do what we can to help them through this time, because their employees are really going to take a big hit at the moment.
I would, I think universally, we all, you know, at least the staff recognizes that, and certainly, we're not, we're not out there to punish anybody or beat anybody when they're down. So, we'll be as accommodating and helpful as we can possibly be in those circumstances.
Any other questions to the Town Manager? Mr. Lindy?
I do have a question. The school building committee is scheduled to meet the night before, and that's a fairly large committee that would probably, the room, the participants might outnumber 25. Any thoughts on that?
Actually, I saw some email traffic today, and my guess is that meeting will get postponed right now. And I think that's partly due, I know the superintendent is flat out and the assistant superintendent are flat out with things they have to deal with. So, my guess is right now that that'll be postponed, but we'll confirm that and obviously send out notice.
Thank you.
Okay, so the State of the Town next week will be postponed till April 7th. We will still have our meeting at 7:30 March 24th. There is no other business before the council?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.